Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. The Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. 02649, it is 7:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on Town and Mashpee website, First on the agenda, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, approval of the minutes, which I actually don't see in our package.
Nor do I, but I have no problem.
But they were sent out.
I read them online, I have no corrections.
Yeah, I have no. All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Public discussion. Lynn Barbie. We should just print this form with your name on it, Lynn. Just pre-fill.
I'm guessing these are on. Sorry.
Thanks for wearing green, Happy St. Patrick's Day. Lynn not only signs up first, she always, she's very color-coordinated.
She looks very nice.
Okay, I have some comments related to this solar bylaw, but I'll submit them in writing. Thank you, Planning Board, sorry. Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. What I want to address tonight is the local comprehensive plan. I've heard some board members state concern about how to reach the broad public to participate in the LCP process. There are a number of ways to reach the public, but I propose one of the best ways is to use one of the most valuable resources we have in this town. The Mashpee Enterprise, our excellent and independent local newspaper. I'm going to help in this process by talking to everyone I know, family, neighbors, friends, to urge them to take out a subscription by home delivery or online. To that end, tonight, I've brought copies, one for each of you, and a few extras, so you can give away a copy to someone you know. I'm hoping that all of you board members already have a subscription, but surely you know folks who don't, or you go to offices or businesses in town that don't have a copy in their lobby or break room. Towns all over the U.S. wish they had their own enterprise newspaper. Too many have closed or been taken over by corporate interests. So let's take advantage of this local community resource. Enterprise reporters do an amazing job covering everything from local government to culture to our schools, sports teams. Don't blush now. To date, journalist Sam Drysdale has already provided great coverage of the LCP. Thank you. Let's get more of our residents reading this excellent paper and learning about the LCP from its pages. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Fine job. Okay, new business. We're going to move the LCP update to just ahead of the next grid generation, next grid update. Carolyn, you with us?
There you go.
Now she's on the mute. Can you make sure we can hear her?
Oh, thank you.
Did she call in?
Yeah, somebody's on the phone.
Carolyn, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can. Yay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
John, if it's okay, I had had a meeting this morning, weekly meeting with Caroline and Ashley. Ashley is unable to be with us tonight, so we have Caroline. But I wanted to launch, I suppose also, if it's okay, my updates under Town Planner Report will kind of be lumped into this update along with Caroline. When we had last spoken with the Planning Board at our former meeting, I had alluded to some contracting issues with Citizen Lab that have since been resolved at our last meeting. I'm really happy to report that we are, now, we have access to the platform, we will be actively populating that platform over the next few weeks. It took about an extra week to resolve that contracting issue, and since we had the goal of making sure that that website was accessible, available, and well-populated prior to the kickoff event, we are proposing the weekend of Saturday, April 9th, for our first public kickoff meeting. That is one week later than I had initially contemplated with you at our last meeting, but we feel it is prudent, A, avoid the conflict with the Boys and Girls Club event, and further to ensure that the website is populated as is possible between now and that timeframe.
Can you say the date again?
Saturday, April 9.
Okay, thank you.
So to kind of to comments made during public comments, if there are no major issues with the board, we will work on providing literature and all of the requisite communication materials by way of social media, the newspaper.
Save the date, all that stuff.
PSAs with Mashpee TV, all of the above, between now and then, to make sure that people are aware of the kickoff event and what we're going to be doing at that time. Again, I'm proposing to do this at Mashpee Middle High School. The room is available at that time and on that day. I think starting sometime relatively earlier in the morning, not too early, but not too late, but we don't want people to feel like they're taking their entire Saturday to participate in this. So maybe like a 10:00 AM kind of launch time. And between now and then, I'll be working with Catherine and the DPW and the schools and our consultants to identify what our needs will be for the space. And what else am I missing? I think that's generally it. So again, yes, we'll be also additionally to get the word out, we'll be planning, and Caroline might be alluding to this further more, additional conversations with boards and commissions next week and the following, and maybe between now and the first week of April. Really just again to let people know the who, the what, the where, the why, and the how we're doing this and what we're going to be asking everyone to participate on on April 9th, and really just ignite some interest in the plan, and then from there, hopefully it snowballs and the process really begins to roll. So from my perspective, the number one priority from my office, along with our consultants, is the engagement platform. So I think Caroline might allude to a little bit to how we're going to utilize that platform for the kickoff event, and we'll continue to populate that platform over time. There is a little bit of a learning curve for us to learn how to use it, but not an insurmountable one. It's quite user-friendly, and the benefit of Citizen Lab is that we don't need to go through them to populate it, we have complete authority over that page ourselves. Additionally, I was provided today, and I'll provide to you because I just received it at 4:30 or 5:00, the Youth Engagement Toolkit. So I will be working with the schools, Dennis, on those activities and meeting with the Student Steering Committee at a time that can be organized with the administrative team at all of the schools and working with that student group. Additionally, we thought it's a nice way to brand this project, to produce a unique logo for the marketing materials. And we had hoped to give the Steering, Student Steering Committee, the license to design and create that logo themselves, but because of February break, we lost the ability to meet with them earlier. So what we opted to do is create three choices and allow them the license to choose them. And lastly, the existing conditions chapters. I was provided existing conditions from Weston and Sampson last week. I did a round of comments on those, and I've asked them to provide those drafts to me in Word document form, be provided to you so that you can comment on them. And so I anticipate having those very shortly, probably by the end of this week. And I'll also be providing those chapters to the requisite boards and commissions who have involvement in the various chapters. So we'll make sure the Affordable Housing Committee has the opportunity to opine on housing, existing condition, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's it from my perspective, and I think, Caroline, if I've missed anything, please feel free.
I didn't need to cover it all, you gave the whole report. I did have some time to go through the web portal today. I feel pretty comfortable that we can have a functioning website probably within a week and a half, enough that people can sign up to get updates. We should be able to start the preliminary surveys and certainly post all of our event calendar and other things for people to be able to understand the process better. So that gave me some comfort that I think that we can be pretty assured that that's going to be up and running very soon. As Evan mentioned, the existing conditions, we're just kind of going through and dotting i's and crossing t's. Again, they are drafts, you'll see some gaps in our knowledge that we will continue to fill as we talk to our stakeholders and to the public. And I think in terms of, we've got the workshop, the Save the Date will definitely go out. We'll create some Facebook ads for the town to post as well, so we can get the word out that way. I think we can send Evan to some verbiage if you want to just use your own personal emails to reach out to the public. It's always a great way to drive people to the process, to use your own personal connections. So we can help build that as well. So we're really looking forward to the workshops and starting to think about how that's going to happen. It's, as you know, the first and the biggest, but it's not the only one. So it's really exciting to kind of get out there and meet people and get the ball rolling.
Great.
You know how when we vote, they have the signs up on the rotary, you know, tonight, 7:00?
Yes.
We can do that.
Good idea.
And then the high school has that bulletin.
Yeah, we'll definitely include something on the marquee sign.
Like we're a church on Sundays, they give us a bulletin. If we could advertise in that, I'm sure the church, the church would do that. A lot of people read that, you know, they get the date and everything.
Good idea.
You could probably even put a flyer in there.
Yeah, we'll try and get flyers out, we'll try and get in all the, you know, Senior Center newsletter, anyone who has a constant contact, you know, we're really going to try and hit up, you know, every opportunity we have now that we, A, will have marketing materials and B, a date and a website to direct them to.
Would our local public restaurants, businesses want to put them out to?
Right.
Exactly. The only other thing I forgot to mention is that I had finally heard back from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and we have had a tribal liaison named Marie Stone.
Good.
I've reached out to Marie to set up an initial discussion with her relative to the existing conditions chapters.
Excellent.
Now, also, would you reach out to the chamber, Drew, about getting the word out?
Absolutely.
Way ahead of me.
That's the update.
Anything else, anything for Caroline?
So you're meeting with some boards and committees next week?
We are, we're trying to hit, you know, multiple boards and committees, you know, in one day. So I'm trying to remember, the Historical Commission meets next Thursday, I believe, at 4:00. I've also, and so we want to hit that, meet with them, and I've reached out to the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee and of the EDIC to have, I've asked them to hold a special joint meeting on that same date.
Right.
In the evening, solely for the purposes of discussion, A, the plan, and B, the kickoff event.
And that's you and the consultants?
And our consultants, and we'll hopefully be able to connect with Marie Stone earlier in that morning to have a discussion with the tribe.
Great.
So that's our intention for next week. I don't have confirmations for these yet, but that was what we discussed today, and that's in the works. So maybe I can follow up with the board by email when those things are confirmed.
Yeah, that's great. Good. Anything else?
No. Good. Anything else I missed, Caroline?
That's it. Well, it's photos. I'm in need of nice Mashpee photos and credits with those photos. That would be very helpful.
You know what, talk to Paul Rifkin.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, also, I should note, the schools have done a photo project recently. It's actually on display, I think, at Quashnet, maybe it's at the middle high school, but they've asked us if they, we would be able to include those photos in, A, our marketing materials and our final product, and we can credit the students for their work accordingly. I do have those available in my email, but I haven't been able to consume them in any form yet. But we do have, again, the students participating with photo documentation of the town.
Good, that's awesome.
That's a good idea, because when they, even the little kids, if they paint the picture, you can have the parents, like my daughter used to visit, parents would come in and they'd go around, but you can have the parents come up to the high school.
Exactly. You know, I'm really excited about the youth engagement piece of this. I just went through what Ashley had put together for the toolkit, and it's really exciting. I'll be, I'm eager to share it with you all for your own review and comment, and eager to see how the kids view the planning process uniquely themselves.
Cool. Carolyn, I'll send you Paul Rifkin's contact information.
And I guess I'll just put the general call out there, if there's anyone in the community who has their own photographs, who they'd like to provide to me by email.
Right.
And with an appropriate credit and citation, I'd be happy to accept them and provide them with your expressed authorization.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, great update. Thank you, Caroline.
No problem, thanks.
Okay, next up, NextGrid.
Hi, how are you guys doing? It's really nice to be back. I know you guys, a lot of you guys remember me from the last time I was here, speaking about the, pretty much the exact same project. I think Planning Board member Calhan, you were on vacation, so you're the only one that didn't see me speak the last time. So I do have a good PowerPoint presentation for you guys last time, which is pretty much the only difference, and we refined our numbers and have a, you know, a full presentation for you guys. So I'm just going to get to it. You know, I'm here, I work for NextGrid Inc. We are a solar company, and we specialize in repurposing rooftops, parking lots, and distressed land, and turning them into clean energy-producing solar power plants. On Cape Cod, our specialty has kind of been repurposing sand pits. So we have permitted projects in Brewster, Bourne, and Harwich, and we have a fully constructed sand pit project in Chatham. Additionally, we've done a bunch of rooftop and parking lot projects in Hyannis, Yarmouth, Dennis, Provincetown. And then we have some contracts with some really big Cape Cod institutions that we're happy to get building in the near future. So we have a contract at the parking lot at the Steamship Authority, the parking, the employee parking lot at Cape Cod Hospital, which is just on the other side of the Hyannis border in Yarmouth, and the Wellfleet Drive and in their old overflow parking lot. And proudly, we moved our corporate offices into Boston at the end of last year. So we are a Massachusetts-based company now.
Good. Where is the Chatham project?
It's on Middle Road, so the town has their transfer station, and they have solar on that transfer station, and it's behind it on an old sand pit. So Sam Rider Road and Middle, not exactly on the corner, but it's on the aerial now. If you look at it Google, the satellite image shows our solar field now, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
So the warrant article is to create a solar overlay district on this particular parcel or this grouping of parcels. Solar overlay districts are very common in the state of Massachusetts. A lot of townships and some of the cities have those, and what it does is adds a secondary use to the underlying zoning. So in this case, it adds large ground-mounted solar facilities as another use to the underlying zone. So the zone doesn't change, it's just adding a layer on top. This is good for towns, in my opinion, for especially the reason it gives towns the freedom to pick and choose where they think solar is the most appropriate use. So maybe everything in your R5 zone district is definitely not great for solar, but this parcel might be good because it's distressed or a brownfield or doesn't have proper access, or there's a lot of different reasons why a town might find solar to be the highest and best use on a particular parcel, especially on Cape Cod, it's frequently used on sand pits. The properties we're talking about, the main parcel's address is 420 Nathan Ellis Highway. The large parcel there is 24 and 1/2 acres. With all the surrounding residential parcels, it's around 38 acres. The northern half of the parcel we're talking about is Zone C2 Commercial, and the southern half is Zone R5 Residential. Around half of the site, pretty much the entire western half, and then a circle to the north-central portion where sand pits, as far back as the satellite images go, and operations ceased on those sand pits in the mid-2000s, I believe around 2005. So you can see the historic, it's been stripped of trees for quite some time on that western portion. So these are just some images through time. And again, we find, sand pit used to be ideal for solar. It's hard to develop other projects at a good cost because it takes a lot of civil work, a lot of infill, and you're developing on sand. There's really no trees of any value. Even after 15 years, only a few scrub pines in that sand pit area have been able to regrow and about as tall as most of them. So what we're proposing is a, you know, roughly nine-megawatt ground-mounted fixed-tilt solar facility with battery storage. So it's exactly what it sounds like. It's a fixed tilt, so they don't move, they're at a fixed angle, they're on steel rocks on the ground, they sit, you know, six to seven feet high at their highest point. Underneath the panels, you know, it's grass, it's a pollinator mix, and it really is just a low-impact development, and I'll get more to that here in a second. So the way we've proposed to make this as minimum impact as possible is to provide a minimum 50-foot wooded buffer on all residential sides. So that's the existing natural tree buffer, leaving 50 feet, and then behind that to create an earthen berm with Leyland cypress behind it. Right now, 50-foot wooded buffer creates a three-season, pretty much impenetrable, wooded visual buffer, but in the winter, you can still see through it. So to mitigate four seasons of visual impact, we're proposing quite a few Leyland cypresses that would be behind that, the buffer. The only part of a solar facility that makes noise is the inverters. We're proposing central inverters that we're locating in the middle of the site. The reason we're locating in the middle of the site, it's farther, farthest away from any public right-of-ways or structures. These are inaudible, around 300 feet, even at their highest, the highest point in the day where they're producing the most energy. We're 800 feet away from any residential structure, and I think 700 feet from any public right-of-way, so it won't be able to be heard. And again, these don't function at all at night, they don't function really in the morning or at twilight, so it's going to be a completely quiet project and a completely invisible project. Additionally, we're planting pollinators underneath the solar facility. That creates essentially a meadow. The bees love it, small animals like it, snakes and turtles like it. It creates, you know, shading from predators and creates a nice habitat for them with the tall grass. Last time I was here, there was comments talking about deer. It's true, deer will not be able to access this portion of property anymore, but all other native species should be able to get in and out of here very easily. So there will be no impact on traffic. After construction, we're talking an average of two vehicle trips a year, one for grasscutting, one for scheduled maintenance. It could be more or less, depending on how the grass is growing, if it's starting to shade the panels, but essentially, if you say one residential structure is going to create one vehicle trip a day, this is creating two a year. So far less traffic impact than even a single house. It's not impacting any schools because we're not adding any residents. It's not impacting the groundwater because we're not proposing any septic, we're not putting nitrogens in the grounds. We clean our panels if they ever need to be cleaned with just water. If there's ever minerals in the water, we just drop it out with a little bit of vinegar. So we're not using any chemicals, we're hand-cutting our grasses, no pesticides. We're really not adding any extra strain on any town services or resources. So very low-impact development, but what there will be, increased income from the town, which I'll get to very shortly, a very low-impact neighbor, and renewable energy produced right here in Mashpee, and that'll be used in the local Mashpee distribution grid. This will be a community solar project, so through the Massachusetts SMART program, residents will be able to actually opt in to this particular solar system and get around 15% off their power bill. Any project in the SMART program that decides to opt in to community solar can offer their communities the same benefit, but it's, to me, I think it's very cool, residents can see the solar field that they're actually getting power from, so.
Caught my eye the first time you talked about that, the town can pay less in power.
The town can opt in to that 15% as well, yes, sir. So I sometimes get the feeling that people think if this doesn't go in, it's going to stay exactly the same, but there are other uses that are allowed on this property. So allowed as of right, you know, livestock or poultry farm, a church, government building, a cemetery, residential uses and agricultural uses, they don't have any limit on tree clearing. Theoretically, somebody could build a cornfield here and cut all the trees if they were so inclined. Use is allowed a special permit or retail stores, including some big-box uses, auto sales, a marijuana establishment, parking lot as a principal use. Theoretically, someone could come in, get a special permit to build a parking lot and put solar panels over the top of that parking lot in this zone district, but not ground-mounted solar in the strip mall. So what everybody seems to be most interested in is the financial proposition. We're offering three pieces for the town to get additional income. The first is a payment in lieu of taxes. The reason this isn't going to be traditionally taxed is because the next part I'll get to is essentially we're offering to give the land to the town during this period. So we'll still pay taxes, it'll be a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement. What we're proposing is $12,000 per megawatt, if the size were to stay the same, which hopefully it would, the estimated income to the town over that 20-year initial period, Additionally, we donate the town, the land to the town as a mechanism to give the town even more money. And so we would buy the land from a private landowner, gift that land to the town, and then pay the town rent. The rent that we're proposing on the land is $9,450 per megawatt, estimated annually about $73,000, and over the life of the project, $1,474,200. And again, that's over a 20-year term. And then we'd have a reversion clause in that agreement, so we would be able to have the option after the solar is decommissioned to buy that property back at $2180,000. So the minimum the town would get back after the 20-year term is a payment of over $2 million for a piece of property that they didn't previously own. If we did not exercise that option, the town would be free to sell that land at whatever market rate is available at the time. So I know it's been insinuated that that shouldn't be looked at as part of the deal for the town, but either the town's getting 35 acres of land that they're free to sell or they're getting over $2 million at the end of this project. So, you know, I'd consider that the minimum amount. So the financial proposition, all in all, is $5,526,200 that would go to the town, again, for a development that is very low-impact. This isn't the end, if this passes, this is the beginning. So this changes the zoning, and that's all it's really doing for us. After that, we're still going to need to obtain all the town permits, so we would come back to you guys for a special permit, depending on how far the system was from any wetland resources, we'd be going to the Conservation Commission, Cape Cod Commission. You know, a lot of work still has to be done on the permitting side. Part of this agreement, we're doing a payment in lieu of taxes, we're doing this gifting of the land, that's all going to need to be accepted because it's more than the three-year financial contract with the town, so that also needs to go back to town meeting again. So we'd be back for the fall town meeting, and the town would need to negotiate all these numbers, you know, the town is free to negotiate them, and that would have to be accepted at town meeting. The town would need to then accept the land under a quitclaim deed. Project construction would happen, it would be approximately four months, and then it's 20 years of income on a fairly passive development. So those are the next steps, and that's really the end of my presentation. I'm here to answer questions.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Okay, and if it's real cold, does this generate electricity? I know some of my batteries.
Yeah, absolutely.
Instead of getting 100%, it goes down to 80%. So does the cold weather affect the solar panel?
Cold affects it, but, you know, people still use solar panels up in Iceland and Sweden, and it still generates power all year, in the winter and everything. The things that are doing, affect production are heavy clouds, so, and of course, snow cover.
How do you project how much electricity you're going to make, because it's going to be cloudy for, it could be cloudy for a week, so I don't think that's going to generate electricity, right?
Sure, so. So when we're modeling for production, we're looking at, you know, five-year periods throughout history, and we're looking at it as a whole. We're not just anticipating 365 days of sun.
So this goes into the grid or does it come to the town? I mean.
Well, see, it goes direct, almost all power goes into the grid, and then, you know, if the town utilizes it through community solar, it's more of a bill offset. It's, but it's in the local distribution grid, so you technically are using that power, but it's not behind your meter.
But you have to sign up for the town to get a benefit?
It's called an opt-in, yeah. It's on your bill, yeah.
I never thought about that with the snow. Are there heaters in it, like in the heavy snowfall?
No, they're kind of slick, and the snowfall's often really easy. You know, if it's freezing onto it, we can have a crew go brush it off, but we don't, you know.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, even this blast big snowstorm, it slid off our panels pretty quick.
But what about when it ices?
It has some de-icing capabilities, but yeah. You know, most of these, the companies that have been doing this a long time, they've all worked in New England for a long time, and they're used to snow. Icicles were a big problem when these first started coming in on carports and stuff. So everybody's learned their lessons over the years, so, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah. I would, Mr. Chairman, may I? Thanks. So Next Grid doesn't own the property.
We do, we not currently own the property.
Okay. So if the zoning gets passed, what's the guarantee that you're going to be the owner?
So we have a, so.
Do you have an exclusive option to purchase?
We have an exclusive option expired, supposed to be re-upped by the time this goes to town meeting. So you'll, we've already told the town, we'll show them that agreement, that'll be re-signed by that time, and it'll be an exclusive purchase and sale. And we've put a lot of money and effort into this project already. On the Next Grid side, we don't intend to lose this deal.
Oh, I know it's not on your, I know it's not on your list.
No, I understand, I know.
Can you give us a copy of the current exclusive option to purchase?
The expired one? So we have an expired one, and we'll get a new one before town meeting that we've already told the board we'll give.
I'd like to see the, I'd like to see that. Is that something you can, you can give the planning board members?
Almost positive that that's not going to be a problem. We need a minute to redact it. We usually don't like to spread numbers around, but all the words will stay.
I, I don't think I'm concerned about the price.
Yeah, I know. I know what you're concerned about.
Yeah, I'm looking at the language, yeah. So you guys all know what an exclusive option to purchase is. It's a P and S that, yeah, you do.
And that's what the select board asked for, didn't they?
I didn't hear that.
The select board actually didn't ask us. They've asked me since.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through Jeff's point.
Good, okay.
Yeah, that would, and the sooner the better, because I think we're having a public hearing on this soon. In two weeks.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So I'd like to have that available.
Yep, absolutely. I understand.
So it sounds like this is a project of, that's going to trigger Cape Cod Commission review?
It likely will. So we've had other projects that are completely sandpits, and they haven't. But this is, you know, maybe 55% former sandpit, so it probably will trigger Cape Cod review.
Does that go under a development of regional impact? Does that get considered a DRI?
So it would, it would likely be a DRI review. There's also, you know, one of these, since it's kind of going to be a deal with the town and the town's going to own the land, you know.
No, I don't understand what you're going, so explain to me.
Yeah, so we're gifting the land to the towns. The town will actually be owning the land at the time of the application to the Cape Cod review. And so it'll still likely be a DRI review.
Right.
But you guys would hopefully be a municipal partner in that, so you could realize the full benefit, financial benefit that we're offering.
Yeah, and do you know what place type this would be put in?
Not off the top of my head.
Is that something you could touch base with them on?
Yeah, I talked to their former regulatory officer, John Idman, about this, Idman, like, two years ago. He's since left, so I have to touch base on this project with his replacement.
If you could, that would, that would be great to know.
Sure.
Prior to the public hearing. So that's the place type, because that, you know, sets how much open space these solar farms have to set aside. So if you do like a newspaper Google search of solar farms on Cape Cod, you'll see there's quite a range of open space that's required. So that would be good to know. And I know you're returning back to the Board of Selectmen on Monday?
Monday, yeah.
They had some financial questions, right?
They do have some financial questions. I hope to get more, some clarity from them as well. They, the numbers that they're saying, you know, they were saying that without this project, the land would be getting somewhere in the neighborhood of $900,000 in normal taxes. But we have the rent, the tax bills for these properties, and they're more around, like, in 20 years, it would be more like $224,000. So I don't, we don't understand where the $900,000 number is coming from, so hopefully we get that answer, and then we can give a more robust response. But the numbers that we have are, I think, are hopefully pretty clear to you guys.
These are clear.
And, and you're not the petitioner for the bylaw?
Well, we can't be petitioner. I don't live here.
No, I'm asking, that's it.
Yeah, no.
Do you know if the petitioner is going to present at the public hearing?
One of the petitioners is set to speak during the town meeting.
Well, we have a public hearing coming up in two weeks, and last time, the petitioner did not come, and it was unclear who was talking for whom. So it might be something that gets cleared up, that if they're represented by somebody, that the person representing them has legal status to do that? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, so you're saying that somebody, that one of the petitioners needs to speak at your public hearing that's in two weeks.
That's typically what happens with petition, citizens' petition articles. I think that there was just the lack of knowledge.
Sure.
And when I asked if the petitioner was there, nobody could tell me who, who the petitioner was.
Okay.
And there was an attorney, a well-respected attorney, who did not say I was representing the petitioner. It was very confusing to me who was speaking, so presenting, making that presentation.
Okay.
So there has to be some type of representative from the legal petitioner.
Okay, so we've talked about one of the petitioners speaking, being there to represent the project at town meeting, but I'll make sure that they're also available to be here for your public hearing.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay. Well, my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
I think you guys all have my contact information, or, so any questions you have, you know, I'm always, always available.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Okay, next up, discussion relative to potential cottage court pocket neighborhood zoning bylaw proposal with Willoughby Country Club.
Good evening. Jack McLeeny, counsel for Willoughby Country Club. And what you see up on the screen here is an overall map laying out the 440 acres that constitute Willoughby. And as you could see, we recently, last year, acquired this five-acre parcel, which I refer to sort of as the hole in the donut. It's right in the middle of the, of the property. It was not part of the original special permit. It was under, you know, family owned it since the 70s, basically. We recently acquired it, and it's, as I said, a total of five acres. There's a significant wetland that's about an acre and a half on it. And we reached out to Evan a few weeks ago to express our interest in looking at developing this parcel and doing something that would be, you know, a new, small neighborhood, but with some density that would, it's currently zoned R3, and we would like to explore the possibility of developing at a density which is, you know, more like what we've done on the rest of our project, and, you know, given the golf course and the very large amount of open space that we have here. And again, this, we have the advantage of our sewer treatment plant. This currently, the one house that's there is on a septic system, but anything we did, we would connect to the sewer treatment plant, and we have, we have that capacity. So we reached out to Evan to sort of start a dialogue about what, what could be done. And, you know, Evan suggested that we look at the concept of sort of a cottage colony, which, you know, maybe would be of utility throughout the town, is the idea to allow, you know, these pocket neighborhoods on smaller parcels that would allow for a more affordable product to be constructed there. And I, you know, Evan has, I think, circulated some language that, that he kind of pulled together from different spots, but I can let you talk to the sort of intent.
So when Jack first approached me with the concept for a potential rezoning in this area, my first thought went to how we can provide the potential for accommodation of missing-middle housing types. And when they had, they, Willoughby, had described the concept that they had been contemplating, it was very similar in typology to what is referred to as a cottage court. And I thought a cottage court bylaw would be something the town would be able to consider that would be harmonious with the town's existing green spaces and would accommodate some additional density. The language that I've proposed, I did, after we had a conversation, took just a first brush at the, at some, a potential zoning bylaw proposal for your contemplation, solely for the purposes of discussion. There are a few pieces that I've included in there that I think will be important if this is a discussion you'd like to continue with. First, that this would be an allowed use in all, in both residential zoning districts on conforming lots, meaning 40,000-square-foot lots minimum in the R3 and 80,000-square-foot lots minimum in the R5, provided that they're on either public or private wastewater treatment. So at this time, not everywhere in town would be accommodated by that, that requirement, but it would provide Willoughby that flexibility. What a cottage court essentially is, is a collection of singular residential housing types around essentially common space. So the central courtyard, if you will, is kind of functions as someone's backyard with residential housing typologies surrounding that courtyard. You'll see a graphic representation provided by Willoughby that I think is close, but isn't, I don't think quite constitutes a cottage court. And I've provided them some feedback so far on where they are and kind of where I'm seeing the potential for a cottage court kind of bylaw. Say it again?
You have the driveways come to the outside.
Yeah, so some of the feedback that I had given to Willoughby so far was that I think the shared amenity, the shared space in a cottage court is, it's like a lifestyle option that I think really defines the typology. So I think the things that are not included in the draft proposal that I've given to you so far and that really needs some further discussion among you all are things like density. How many dwellings are we talking about? I don't, I haven't provided any contemplation or prescription or any cap on the density. For me, it's, the most important thing is, is site design and building form and the shared amenities, and also the parking requirements. What I had shared with Willoughby about that graphic representation of their ideal was, to me, is really more closely representative of a classic cluster subdivision, with the exception of the subdivision of land. So I think they're close, but I would, I had shared that I think it would be best for the cottage court typology for the housing aid to have more of the shared amenity and for parking to be shared surface and incentivized on-street parking so that the actual community space is more well-defined. What also is not included in the zoning or additional contemplations about.
I feel, I feel like you want this.
Oh, I keep looking at it because I'm just trying to make reference. So I've given some, like, brief, brief language about what a cottage court is, the different types of cottage courts that there could be, some minimum requirements, some really vague contemplation of minimum and maximum floor areas of the actual units. What I want to encourage the board to consider here is creating a missing-middle housing type on conforming lots with wastewater treatment that provides some economy of scale for the developer, whereas that affordability is transferred back to a potential owner and/or renter. And that should further be capitalized on by just a smaller unit size. I've also included in the draft proposal some affordable housing requirements that generally mimics the state's inclusionary zoning language. But I want to be very clear that the language I presented to you now is merely for discussion purposes. If you're interested in pursuing this conversation further, I would, I would do a deeper dive into what constitutes a cottage court, maybe have a dialogue with you all, workshop it like we had the accessory apartment bylaw.
Yeah.
And make very clear that, again, this is for, would be, I'm proposing would be for infill, missing-middle development in the residential districts on conforming lots to increase density and be harmonious with the existing green spaces while providing a housing typology that doesn't quite exist. What I do want to discourage us from doing is perpetuating the affordability issues and seasonality issues and things like that. And I've expressed that as much to Willoughby, but I think that based on their conceptual site plan that they had proposed to me initially, that the cottage court typology is something that can function well for their needs, for the products that they generally have produced and delivered to the residents of Willoughby, but also a bylaw that would be translatable across the land, the overall land area of the town. And as the sewer phase has come online, might be able to take advantage of elsewhere in the town. So that's kind of it. I'd be happy to answer questions about just the draft I've provided, or I'm sure Jack could discuss a little bit further, their, their goals and priorities.
Evan, I'm confused, 40,000 square feet or 80,000? So with these projects, we're not going by that, though, right? I mean, on a 40,000.
In R3 or R5?
I'm proposing that this would be infill for conforming lots in the town. So this lot in particular is five acres and would comply with that requirement. What this, what I've proposed here wouldn't allow someone with a substandard building lot to do a cottage court, or a pre-existing non-conforming lot would not be allowed to utilize a cottage court. That's something that we can certainly dialogue about and debate. I just offered that as an initial proposal.
So, but the way this is written, though, if you've got a five-acre lot, you said Jack's had one acre of wetland, so that means you've got.
Three and a half acres.
Four more, about three, there's only three houses on this?
Today, they could construct three detached, single-family homes, yes.
We want to get more, right?
And so the goal is to, if you're on public or private wastewater treatment, you could do more.
Oh, I agree with, okay, that, okay. I was just confused.
No, that was a good question. Good question.
So again, I'm hoping that if this is a direction the board is interested in working through with Willoughby, that, that this would be the initial, the start of the conversation, and I think we would look on workshopping this with you all through the coming months and eventually for a submission for the October town meeting.
All right, another one, we mentioned affordable. How can this be affordable in Willoughby?
It's a great question.
It's a very good question, yes.
I've provided relatively blunt feedback with, in that regard. I think the most important thing is site design, building form, and limitation, certain limitations that don't perpetuate the issues that are exacerbating the housing crisis, the issues surrounding the housing crisis, but are complementary to a solution. So as I, I think this typology will not accommodate that goal, but I think with some thoughtful form and dimensional considerations, creating, again, the economies of scale for the developer to produce more units on the smaller site, and dimensional criteria, whereas the size of the structure is something manageable, just by design alone, they're more accessible. I'm not saying that these are going to. I'm not saying that these are going to be cheap.
But you have in here...
More affordable.
But there's a, you have in here a mandatory provision of affordable units.
I do, yes.
Where one in 10 would be deed restricted affordable to a low-mod income household.
Correct.
Right. So that, that's, I mean, you would have nine units that, yes, you're trying to get into the missing middle, but one unit would be affordable and be lotteryed off like a habitat house.
I know this property, they could come in without really accessing to Willabend. Is this going to be like the other side of the tracks after it's built over?
No.
Oh, you live over there?
Yeah. You know where it is? You come in and you don't really go into that property.
Yes.
And once you put affordable on it, are the other people going to shun you? Like, oh...
Yeah, I, you know, Evan and I have had, you know, a frank discussion about this.
I like the idea of affordable housing.
I mean, that, this is not, you know, we would not characterize what we're planning to do there as affordable. I think everyone, everyone understands that. But there is, you know, provision in there for one of the units to be done or monetary provision or something. But I think what we're talking about is, you know, using this as a template that could be applied town-wide. Now, a lot of, you know, what we build is, you know, the finishes, et cetera. You've got 27 holes of golf, a lot of that expense gets built in. But, you know, you could build this same sort of, sort of house, a type of house, another place, and it could be very affordable.
That's what I was getting at. I'd rather see you donate enough money to build another, a real affordable house in a neighborhood with children in it.
Yeah.
Not, not, you know...
And I would encourage you also to think, the way I also try to remind myself of the housing issues is that we really have, beyond an affordability and access problem, we have a mobility problem in the marketplace, whereas we're all essentially stuck where we are because we don't necessarily have the options to choose. So this is a response to that mobility challenge or the housing choice aspect of the housing crisis. So this zoning proposal is, has been spurred by a conversation I've had with Willabend, but is ideally to be applied town-wide.
Right.
That's not, I...
Yeah. I mean, you're creating neighborhoods.
Pocket, they're referred to as cottage court, pocket neighborhood.
Yeah.
But yes.
Right.
So I think the things that we would need to continue to workshop are site design standards, building form, densities if necessary. But again, this is, I provided a skeleton and we have a parcel as a kind of a case example with already the ability to access wastewater treatment. So I just wanted to bring it to you and I figured it would be best with Jack to bring this to you earlier rather than later.
Jack, how does Willabend feel?
I'm sorry?
How does Willabend feel?
Good, good. You know, we wanted to really start a dialogue. We haven't done any real design work on this or anything. I mean, as, currently, it's zoned for three single-family houses. That's not what we were looking to do. We're looking to start a dialogue and see, you know, if there's a template that we could use to get some additional density on the site that would work, you know, for the town. You know, the affordable piece, as I said, is not, I didn't call Evan and say we want to do an affordable housing neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I'm just, you know, that's just not what we, what we're about. But having said that, as Mary pointed out, there'll be a mechanism to provide for affordable housing in it. And, you know, I think, as Evan has said, the typology would be something, you could build, you know, these units somewhere else in town and they could, you know, be much closer to filling that gap in the middle of the, you know, the housing.
Right.
The other thing that puts pressure on our housing market is the seasonality of, right? So Mashpee is about 30% of our housing stock is used only for part of the year. What's, do you know what your percentage is in Willabend?
It's, it's actually gone up, you know, over my tenure. I would say 15 years ago was probably 10 or 15%. It's closer to 30 now, I think. Clearly, the pandemic, you know, brought a lot of people down and they realized that, you know, they like staying here in the winter.
Right.
And it's a great town and it's a great place to work from. So I, I actually, we're seeing some younger families come in, I think, you know, it's happening all over the Cape.
So here's, here's what I'm getting at, right?
Yeah.
We don't want to give you density if it's just going to be used for, you know, we don't want to give you density for housing that's only going to be used seasonally. That doesn't solve our problems.
Right, right.
Right? So, you know, put your thinking cap on, how do we make a higher percentage of these units used year-round?
How would you, writing the deed, you can't use it for the summer? I mean, I agree with you, but how do you, how do you say you have to be here?
Well, associations can have rules. And deed writers don't have to be linked to income. Right? They can say, you have to be there, to live there, you have to, instead of 85% of the area median income, you can say 400% of the area median income, right? So you're capturing, you know, the people that are going to buy these units anyways. But in the deed writer, it says you have to live here year-round. So it's, it's something to think about. If, I mean, there's no reason to give density if it's not going to help deal with our housing crisis, right?
The reason to give density is because they could build three big houses on there right now. Would we rather have three big houses or, you know, 20 smaller units, even if they're seasonal?
Well, if, no, I don't want 20 units if they're not, if a good percentage of those aren't being used year-round.
I'd rather have 20 seasonal than three big houses.
I agree. They could put three giant homes on it and they're going to Florida.
Right.
Meanwhile, I just, I think to Mary's point, these are exactly the types of conversations that I would like to be having with the board moving forward.
Yeah.
Because Mary's right, I mean, the...
No, she's right, yeah.
As I pointed out in my build-out, I mean, the seasonal nature of the housing issues are exacerbating these problems. So that is something we will want to consider as we think about infill and certainly missing middle housing options. However, that's why missing middle is ideal.
Right.
Because as we continue to build out detached, single-family across large lots, that's really the linchpin in perpetuation of the problem. So finding standards for missing middle infill development will assist with that, but to Mary's point, we'll want to consider that more fully.
And thank you to Willabend for being open to the conversation.
Great. Well, thank you for the feedback, so.
I think you guys can crack the nut. I think you can do it.
We can. No pressure, Jack.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just in closing, I guess I would love to take comments from any of you all, either in writing regarding the initial draft, or I'll just move forward with additional research, but I'd love some feedback regarding the initially proposed...
Yeah. Isn't there one of these cottage communities in Dennis?
They do, like the cottage colony, where it's like the conversion of the seasonality. I don't know if it's the same thing. I need to refer to their bylaw.
Check, there's one like down Depot Street somewhere in Dennisport.
Yeah, it's like the parking is in it, is all together and people walk.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm proposing here.
I don't know if it's the same thing, but it's close.
But it's a start, though.
Yeah, it's a start.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Very good. I like it.
One day, if we build three big houses there, it wouldn't matter because that's all that you see very. So I like the idea of this, but we've got to make sure we get some seasonal housing out of this.
Yes.
Year-round housing.
Yeah, I mean, year-round.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, next.
Maybe not this part.
Oh, no, I think he'll do it. I think he'll do it.
Yeah, they're going to work with it.
And just remember, this is not the only parcel in town where this...
Right, that's right.
Right, that's right.
Because it's a starting point.
Okay, request to withdraw without prejudice, an application made by Longfellow Design Build. Hello, Mr. Corain.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Longfellow Design Build and Shellback Development LLC. Last week, I was contacted by attorney Kim Bealan, who represents the applicant at the Cape Cod Commission level, saying that they were still working with the Cape Cod Commission to get their application complete. And due to the, and I'm not as familiar with the commission as some other, as, you know, most of you are and Ms. Bealan is, but apparently there's this clunkiness to it where they need to be able to open the public hearing. They can't open the public hearing until the application is complete. In the meantime, they need us to withdraw the application in order for them to continue to go forward. So it's a little bit of a clunkiness. I know that attorney Bealan filed a letter with the board and with Evan to explain a little bit more detail what exactly is still outstanding. There's also reassurance because obviously we acknowledge that there's, you know, work that the board needs to do when we withdraw and refile. And she's assured me that, you know, the next time we come before this board with the application, it will be complete at the Cape Cod Commission end. So, you know, as I said, we've requested this withdrawal without prejudice to allow them to continue with the Cape Cod Commission project process and not get denied on their end for a procedural deficiency.
Her letter was actually very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, great.
I expressed a little bit of frustration over the withdrawal.
You think?
The reality is, the project, I have to notice all of Deer Crossing and other abutters for the project. So we, there was one withdrawal and then another, this is a second withdrawal.
Yes.
And I've tried to keep the neighborhood informed of why these things are occurring.
Yeah.
And I'm going to have to do it again and I don't want them to be confused.
Should we take her up on her offer to...
I told attorney Bealan that I would do the same as I had prior, but I, she, that I would not, she could certainly communicate individually to those residents as well.
Yeah.
And furthermore, I expressed that I wanted clarity for you all why this was being withdrawn again, which is why you received the letter. So if you accept the withdrawal, I would plan on communicating again with all the abutters the reasons why and that the assumption is that this will eventually be refiled and that they'll get more certified mail from me in the future, which I know frustrates them because you have to sign the letter.
I would have full cost about it.
And it's not free to the town either.
No.
Green cards are expensive. They're going to be wondering, yes.
Oh, it's gone now. I got to think.
So the application is not going forward with the Cape Cod Commission?
No, it is. There's still, there's some outstanding items before the commission considers it complete and will open the public hearing. But the application for the commission is still going forward.
We just don't want, we don't want the clock to start ticking.
Right, exactly.
They'll have to refile with the Cape Cod Commission.
Yes, it'll have to come back to the board. We'll have to reopen a public hearing and then re-refer.
Re-refer, it goes, and then it gets reopened at the Cape Cod Commission. But in the, what they're, what they want to do now is take a pause and get all their materials ready.
Correct, correct.
So when they're, when they're at the point of going to the Cape Cod Commission, they can file everything and be completed.
It sounds super simple. Really does.
Well, that's basically what the letter said.
What I asked attorney Bealan was that, and this was reiterated by regulatory staff at the commission, that it would be my request that they do not refile application with you until they have communication from the commission...
Right.
That they can, that the application is complete and can open a public hearing.
Right.
Because it is relatively burdensome administratively to do all of this. And so I want to make sure that the next time we hit the ground running.
And she certainly tried to reassure the board in her letter that that will be the case, that they'll make sure that they get the okay from the Cape Cod Commission before they have us refile it at the local level.
Right. I mean, you may want to summarize her letter when you communicate with the neighbors.
Yes. I mean, I don't want to get overly technical with them. I just want them to be aware and not confused.
Right, and why? You know, most of them are just trying to figure out why.
Exactly. So, yeah, the request is to withdraw without prejudice and the board would need to take a motion of that effect.
So, babe?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll see you next time.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye. Thanks. All right, Evan.
All right. First order of my report. I am very sadly losing my assistant.
Yeah.
Friday is her last day. I just wanted to, she's not here, but I wanted to say publicly that I'm going to sorely miss Patty McGuffin. She's been an astonishingly good employee, just wonderful to have in the office, and I was hoping she would be with me here until I left. But she has opted to take an opportunity back closer to her hometown in western Massachusetts. So I want to send a huge thank you to her. She'll be sorely missed. Be patient with me as I, as I don't have the staff assistance, especially as we're going through the comprehensive planning process. But yes, she's been wonderful and I will miss her.
She sure has.
So thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty. Please don't leave on Friday.
All right. I'm bummed.
So are you going to hire somebody else, though?
Yes, all the paperwork's been filed with HR and hopefully the position will be posted soon. Furthermore, I'm hoping to have an intern this summer if we don't have someone in the short term. I think my LCP update was fully covered in Miss Caroline. If there are any additional questions, though, I can respond to them now.
Yep.
Okay. The only update with regard to the open space committee is that I submitted the memorandum to the select board and they should be contemplating it on their upcoming agenda or at least should be included as correspondence. I know that it has been provided to the select board members.
Great.
Regarding Poppy Overlay District, I have heard from the neighborhood, Glenn McCarthy and Barbara Riley, who are my points of contact, and they are ready to sit down with staff first to kind of go through the issues and kind of define an agenda for further engagement with the planning board. We anticipate having those preliminary discussions with the neighborhood at a staff level in April and will hopefully be before you with some, a more defined agenda, things to workshop through in, I guess, late April, early May, probably in May.
Good.
So there's a lot more to come on that. What I've suggested to them and that they were amenable to and agreeable with was meeting with myself and the building commissioner first to define the problem, discuss a little bit their vision for what could be, an assessment of the problem, and allow them to define for us what their issues are so that we can craft an agenda and a schedule essentially to work through those issues with the planning board.
Great.
You'll see in your packets some numerous correspondence relative to the floodplain provisions in the zoning bylaw. I noticed in your packet, there was a PDF I provided with comments in there that you could access digitally, but I thought they would print.
They're not there.
So I apologize for that.
Usually they're the last page.
Your PDF that you have on your computer will show the comments. Those comments are not from me. They're from Barnstable County's representative for the community rating system, which the town participates in.
That's funny, I saw the comments.
Well, on the PDF, they didn't print.
Yeah.
I was contacted by the GISE 911 coordinator probably about a year ago, along with Shannon, who's the representative from the community rating system program, that there are updates to be required across the floodplain provision bylaws. She provided a model bylaw and comments on the deficiencies in our current floodplain provisions with a request to work through that model in consideration of what needs to be changed to maintain good standing in the community rating system. So I only provided you that information now to let you know where she has identified deficiencies and perhaps a request to invite her in to discuss those with you with the assumption that we'll need to submit a zoning bylaw amendment at the upcoming October town meeting relative to the floodplain provisions.
Good.
So if we read these comments...
Each of those has a specific comment as to, like, the main issues that I noticed in the comments, what you'll see is that there's a lot of building code-related provisions contained in the zoning.
Yeah, I noticed that.
And her concern is generally that the assumption is the Board of Appeals would then have the ability to vary building code provisions, which are state provisions, that they're not able to vary. And also, the floodplain mapping has all changed and there are different requirements for the different zones. So we need to shore that up in our zoning bylaw with regard to the existing condition of the FEMA requirements.
Yeah. Her comments were very helpful, actually.
She had alluded to that most communities are doing a repeal and replace of their bylaws, which we could do, but I want to first just assess our current provisions with Shannon, maybe with our E911 coordinator who manages the floodplain stuff in the town, and begin that dialogue with the planning board, hopefully for a submission for an October town meeting.
That all trickles down to our insurance company, the charter's way too much for it.
So yes, yeah, the, I'm not 100% familiar with the community rating system, so I don't want to give you too much information on that. I'll be prepared to speak on it more at our next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Evan.
Lastly, the, Mary had asked that I give you kind of an overview of the stakeholder working group I had participated in relative to development pressures on perceived open on perceived open space, those institutional recreational lands where they are not protected in any legal form, but these are things like golf courses, agricultural lands, cranberry bogs, summer camps that are, again, not protected but developable and given the nature of the marketplace are under more extreme pressure for development.
But kind of perceived as open space.
But kind of perceived as open space. So we, the, there were three stakeholder working groups.
Did you have the third one?
Yes, yes.
Because I didn't see that, there were two presentations.
They probably didn't put it up yet.
Okay.
But I provided the webpage where all this information is going for you. And my primary takeaways from this were, the land preservation community on Cape Cod had reached out to the commission essentially identifying the pressures, development pressures on these spaces and recognized that the regional policy plan currently didn't necessarily recognize these spaces in any unique or particular, special way despite their perception as open space. So there was concern from this community that as development is proposed on these perceived open spaces, golf courses, agricultural lands, et cetera, that there should be appropriate mitigation in consideration of that land type. They felt that despite a golf course being disturbed or developed, it, it still provided substantial ecological and recreational amenities that should be considered in the commission's calculations for mitigation for potential development. So the conversation really kind of started as around the, the, an assessment of the status of conservation, the needs for affordable housing and housing in general, coupled with the desire and value of land conservation. Kind of segued into a dialogue around each of these kind of competing priorities. And then kind of culminated ultimately in the request to the commission to assess this in the regional policy plan. I think it's the commission's intent to examine this further with the potential for modifications to the regional policy plan sometime. It would seem to be intended to be prior to the next update to the regional policy plan, but I'm not sure what their intention is in that regard.
Do we know when that is?
It's in five-year intervals, so maybe 2024.
Okay.
And so I think the goal of the preservation community is certainly to make sure that these kind of unique parcels are taken, are adequately taken, their conservation value, recreation value was adequately taken into consideration as how we define place type and how we define mitigation value. There were some concern from the housing community that this was kind of in a response to the Twin Brooks proposal in Hyannis.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking.
Timing is awfully coincidental.
That took up a lot of the conversation actually in the second working group with the acknowledgement that we have very limited opportunities to provide housing and it felt to some in this working group that this was an inopportune time to address the issue. But that opinion wasn't shared by all. And that's, that's essentially the update.
What kind, what land here in town would fall under that?
Wampanoag Rotten Gun Club, Camp Farley, various cranberry bogs. Quashnet Valley Golf Course is subject to a special permit, so I don't think that would be included. But any lands that are subdivisible, but not protected in any way. But golf courses, ball fields.
Any golf course, speak?
Say it again?
Not any golf course, Quashnet is a special permit.
Well, depend, like, a lot of the golf courses in Mashpee, for example, are special permit requirements that serve as open space for the development. So.
Oh, okay.
So they would need to modify their special permit or come back for some additional review to do anything with it. But like the Wampanoag Rotten Gun Club, for example, is certainly perceived open space, but is not protected in any legal fashion. So for any reason in the future, that could be subdivided and, and developed.
Yeah.
Same with Camp Farley. I mean, the summer camps are, I think, the ones that I'm kind of paying attention to because the, the population of children is declining and their enrollment's declining and the land value is ever increasing. But the most, I'd say, the most compelling discussion came from a camp owner, who it might have been from Yarmouth, actually, I can't remember who.
I think it is.
Yeah, but he gave.
Wingate.
Yes, very compelling testimony. And the pressures are very real and a lot of these summer camps want to stay open. But at some point, there's a tipping point.
Right.
So it was, it was an engaging discussion. I'm curious to see where the commission takes the information leaned. I gave some feedback and my, essentially, I think I recognize the problem and I think that the regional policy plan can recognize and maybe should recognize the unique value that these lands provide in consideration of mitigation. But I feel like a singular formula is difficult when certain parcels are far more adequate for development and others are not. So when we're up against a housing crisis, you want to be careful, in my opinion, to place additional restrictions on certain. Like, I just feel like there shouldn't be a singular formula, I need to take each case by case basis. That was my feedback. I'd be curious to see what the commission does, but that's my report.
Okay.
Are they going to issue anything in writing?
I'm not sure what their intent is. But the, that website I had sent you will provide all the necessary.
Good information. Okay, committee reports, thank you, Evan.
You're welcome.
Cape Cod Commission?
So the Cape Cod Commission, on March 22nd at 5:30, has a subcommittee public hearing on Twin Brooks. Its, its official name on the agenda is 35 Scudder Lane. Is that right, Scudder?
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's the Twin Brooks. So that's, they're starting the review process of that next Tuesday, the 22nd, at 5:30. And that was my only report on that.
Community preservation?
Community preservation, the only thing I wanted to report was that the chair of the Yarmouth Open Space Committee is Kristy Mizagliano and she's available to talk to you about how that system, how the open space committee in Yarmouth brings parcels to the community preservation committee.
Cool.
Good.
Thank you.
Don't let me forget.
I won't, I'll email you.
Design review?
No meeting.
Plan review?
No meeting.
No meeting for environmental oversight?
No meeting.
We're just going to assume that Jack did not have a meeting.
But the, but the conservation commission is looking for counters for the herring runs.
Dennis, what you doing?
Go ahead.
I didn't have plenty of time to do that.
I had a beautiful run through St. Louis, and I think I'll do it this year, just to get some trail runs in.
Me and Jackie.
You got to keep your.
The run.
Yeah?
We were in boots, taking all the branches.
No, I didn't have to do that, I just had to sit there with a clicker.
I mean, the only, the only thing I had was I put this article in about more housing, more of the same, but it's not, you know, it's, it's across the country, which I found the stats interesting.
It's unbelievable the price of lumber. So how can we build affordable housing? I bought two pieces of wood.
Yeah.
$60. One was a four foot piece of oak and the other one was a little strip of oak.
Trex is cheaper right now.
Is it really?
Trex is cheaper.
Yeah.
Wow.
When I built my deck two summers ago, Trex was twice as much and now the press and tree to lumber is even more expensive.
Yeah.
I'm, yeah.
Yeah, Trex didn't come down.
It's awful.
Yeah.